Hi, I'm the United States of America. Thank you very much. This stands well intentioned under God in the biblical with the repeat and justice. Scroll. And then.
Turn on the event. Minutes for the last meeting. The meeting. I didn't see any additional corrections. Entertained most improved.
The move.
Turning votes most improved.
Second.
Bill seconds. The other discussion. All those in favor? The opposed. Okay. The carrying debt or the budget. Adoption of budgets not in mind fifteen, so. Let's do the transfer. On a breakdown share. Again, we're trying to come up to that year. May I ask how many functions?
I think the bottom plan is proven.
Much motion to approve.
Second.
The end of seconds. The end of discussion. All those in favor?
I.
Any votes? Okay. I guess I'm here for parts and wreck. Reduction in her two thousand twenty four budget. So she can pay up. Once she got budgeted for two thousand twenty five. It'll be forty two thousand deduction out of capital outlay with. Your parking lot, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. This is over time.
You've been.
So she just reduced it. Reduced it so it will carry over the next year. Everybody get that?
Twenty two thousand.
Forty two thousand even, yes.
It's like there in my. Budgets that was. Proving today.
Do what?
Is that reflected on our budget?
That's so she can, that's so she can have the budget today. Yeah.
I was told I needed to introduce about that now in order to get this one.
We're.
Entertain motion to approve. Former. Danny, much motion approved. Dan seconds. Any other questions during discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay. Do you want to try to start on the? Let's discuss the exempt and non-exempt. Is there some paperwork on that, Abby?
Yeah, we just wanted your thoughts because some people didn't need to, you know, exempt or non-exempt status. So therefore we paid them out of their overtime line. And so a lot of shows went into the red lines and get around. So if we just need to do additionals next month for all those departments, I think everything as well as our. I don't know. That's the route we need to take to figure things out.
Everybody did that? Who made people not exempt who had to pay them out? And someone who were exempt who had to pay out?
They, we were, yeah, we pulled it all out of overtime, so all of those buddy's overtime lines are.
Yeah.
If they can, appreciate if you can find it in your budget. Do move it around. Over there, that's okay. When you probably ought to have a list. One of these days on. You may as well still tell. Okay. Everybody get that? Okay. We need an appointment. To the insurance committee. From the county. I'm on it. Mark Corrigis is on it. Patty.
Misty.
Teresa. Or. And Boeing.
Not going. I mean, he had. Deanne resigned.
And who?
Deanne.
I was.
Deanne was.
Over many years.
You dropped off.
Yes.
We need someone, we need, there's supposed to be two others from the council on that. So. I need one here. We meet about once a quarter and Bob meet, correct? Excuse me, do I? I know. We meet by a quarter. Usually done in association, snag over with. Over with us, what? How the insurance doing? And then at the end of the year, we usually get together and make recommendations on what the deductible is going to be. And whether or not we're going to raise the employee contribution. It's. Not a great bit. There was none meeting. And it usually lasts about twenty five minutes. Sometimes, right Patty?
How often do you meet?
About once a quarter unless Patty calls us, you know, says we need to go here. You'll do it, Ernie? Okay. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yep, got Ernie on there? Yeah, we don't have enough time to go through the. Additionals. Then do you don't take very long, will you? Okay.
Um, so. Um, as you guys know, our animal control officer quit. So I am back to covering the on-call hours. For, you know, animal control. And, you know, for the last almost four years, I've been doing this more times than not. So I was asking maybe if we could do a monthly stipend. And as you see in the letter, how, how we want to break it down. And it would be five hundred dollars paid one time monthly. Until we get an animal control officer. And we would, it wouldn't cost you guys, I think we would just pull it out of the animal control officer. Yeah.
How's that compared to this salary of the. Control? I mean, five hundred a month.
He makes. No, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's. Not his whole check or anything.
Yeah, exactly.
It is over two thousand.
I'm not asking for that, you know, just something to kind of.
Much everybody else. Much if I have a problem because it's.
Yeah, we. Put it aside. Or is we want the rest of the salaries and stuff?
Yeah, I don't, I think we can make it as a stipend. And when you. If we make it a salary, I think. Take, we had changed salary on this. Am I right on that? Correct?
Do we have a timeline on this, a deadline on it or anything? Do we want to do it for a certain amount of time and revisit it if needed or?
I mean, it's really hard when we advertise for an animal control officer. We can go months without any hits.
I think we'll do some kind of timeline on, just revisit it. But no, we are twenty days or thirty days.
I'm, I'm good at ninety days. Three months, that's okay.
Day revisit it.
Yeah.
Revisit it and get somebody in between there.
And it would stop.
Then it would stop.
Then it would be prorated, you know, like if they started in the middle of the month, you know, like you pay but a hundred and twenty five per. The weeks, you know, it breaks down.
Any? Any motion? Got anything we need to sign or just? Make a motion.
I'll make that motion, we approved that five hundred dollars a month for nine, for three months, ninety days.
Okay, got motion, getting to approve it for three months, ninety days.
I'll say.
Bill second.
Oh. Go ahead, Bill.
That's okay. I'm good.
Any other discussion? Ernie, you got any thoughts?
And then I did have one more.
We got a bundle of that.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay. Okay.
Okay. So we have been selling flea medicine to the public. And it's like probably June. And we. So when I have to buy more, it's been coming out of like my budget or. Or like our unrestricted. And I was wondering if we could take that flea medicine money and put it into its own account. So then I can buy, I can keep replenishing what we normally sell to public.
And it can be. Laid up, okay?
I know, yeah, it always has to be appropriate. Like the money always has to be like if you spend it.
Right.
Then you have to get capital approval to appropriate it to be able to spend it yet.
Do an addition.
So if you can, right now it's budget time, so just put your. Put the appropriation. I mean, the appropriation part, I mean, that's always got enough in there to be.
Right.
Buying for.
Right.
We could do that, what, what budget is this?
It's not, it's just something that we would. We started buying it. You know, and to buy it, you know, we just took out of like our unrestricted or divide to get it started.
So you can put it back in unrestricted and then just. Continue with that.
Because I was wondering about that.
Right? We've been on the spot trying to make it. I think that's, I think that's. Um, do just put it. Put it, buy it from there and put it back in there, buy it.
Okay.
Because it doesn't have to be appropriated and approved.
Alright, so you reported your motion, you need to tell us. What? Your reported collections needs to tell us.
Right.
Lots of flea meds and. Lots of adoptions, et cetera.
Exactly. So we can, so we can break that down and put it, yeah. One of our forty collections. Right.
Did that question answer?
Oh.
Anything else, maybe?
Oh, yeah, the on-call, I'm sorry. The on-call, we approved it, but I mean, it's kind of like. Um, the, we had the on-call hours, he would be paid three dollars an hour. For sitting, you know, after hours. And, you know, when he got called in, he would be reimbursed call time. So that's a dollar back to square one, so. Best time of, you know.
You have to bring it back to us whenever they get some money hired, correct? Make sure it's. Approved and, because it does change his wages. And change the. Stop rate. So it'll, it'll have to be reworked.
What is the salary where? You approve for this next two months. Going forward.
Okay. We have one minute. I ain't got nothing to talk on.
Thirty six. Sing a song, Gary.
Do what?
Sing a song.
Just Billy.
No. He's got a talent, cancel it.
Everybody get a copy of everything I did? Copy the budget. And. Ordinance of resolution. And we're good to go. Toby. You want to go over this? The. Seen on Riverboat, there's been sixty thousand, three hundred dollars. County general budget came down a little bit from what first. First down the road, so it's twelve million, six hundred ninety eight dollars. Six, twelve million, six hundred ninety eight thousand, two hundred and three dollars. Reassessments at two forty eight. Five, five hundred. Local income tax, nine hundred eighty one thousand. Public safety, local income tax, respending one million, ninety three thousand, three hundred and thirty eight dollars. Health insurance is four million, eight hundred and eighty seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh, tourism, convention and visitor, three hundred and seventy four thousand, seven hundred. Sixty five dollars. Highway is it, three million, one hundred and twenty five thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Local roads and streets, one million, five hundred and fifty thousand. Community bridge, one million. Health, five seventy eight, three thirty five. Uh, emergency telephone system, four hundred and forty eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. Parking wreck, one million. Three, thirty three thousand, five hundred and fifty eight dollars. Recreation, ninety two thousand. Give me the capital fund, seven hundred and fifty nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. That's a total of twenty eight million, nine hundred and thirty one dollars and nine hundred and. Twenty eight million, nine hundred and thirty one thousand, nine hundred and ninety five dollars. With an adopted rate of point three nine five. Total. Okay. Home rule funds. Adult probation, one hundred and thirty nine thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. Given probation to fifty five hundred. Emergency management, right to know, seven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. IT department, six hundred and fifty nine thousand and eighty three dollars. Special purpose jail tax, four million, one hundred and seventy nine thousand, three hundred and forty four dollars. Clerks, recorded perpetuation fund, forty two thousand, one forty eight. Grand free community, sixty two thousand, four ten. Countywide nine one one, nine hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and ninety three dollars. Down the official training, ten thousand for a total of six million, sixty six thousand, one hundred and five dollars.
Hey Danny, is the IT, is that split with the city?
Yeah. That's, yeah. That's split with the city, we do the budget. And I just reimburse it, same way with a, a. Animal shelter. And we got a solid waste budget. Everybody get a copy of it? Thank you for bringing. Uh. Adopted budget. Adopted tax levy, adopted budget, is that right, just eighty five thousand? Yeah. Say something, I just got eighty five thousand.
Because it's like, um. What was in?
No.
Seven hundred and some.
It's seven hundred and something.
That's, I just got eighty five thousand under a month.
Wish that's.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, actually, well.
Hey, you said it. And we'll see, check it in there. If I have any questions on the. Ordinance of resolution to appropriations and tax things. And adopting the budget.
Is that compared to the rate last year?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a question on budgets? Was it ever brought up on part-time pay? Is part-time getting a raise?
That's all we, that's all we raised in the home.
That we moved some.
Think part-time pay, we, didn't we, when we was sixteen, didn't we? Did we vote to raise it seventeen?
I'm not sure.
That's all we did.
Wasn't sure.
I'll come back to the minutes and see, you know. I was thinking we did.
I wasn't sure if it was actually ever.
Yeah, we talked about, I think we moved on to the. Power. Probably, maybe forgot to prove that. We talked about it. I know it got, it was fifteen, then it got moved up to sixteen.
I thought, I thought.
Yeah.
Dollars.
Oh, it's two hundred dollars. We can vote it.
You can vote for it, so just so we make sure.
You need to vote today, we will vote.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm making a motion, raise part time, sixteen dollars. I thought it was.
Sorry, you're at sixteen now.
Seven.
I got a motion for Bill to raise part time to seventeen dollars.
I'm sorry.
Kenny seconds, any other discussion?
We know how much that.
Yeah, it shouldn't be, because the part-time money is all we got. Whatever they use in part-time. When it's gone, it's gone. Makes sense? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, that work?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Overlooked, and we may have done it.
Yeah.
Been a couple of months since I. Looked at. Okay. I understand. Kenny wanted to know what just the rate compared to. This year's last, or this year's rate compared to next year's.
Sorry. Point four, but I. Been lower. One time this year.
Yeah.
Well, that's special.
I've been, everyone telling Jim.
Solid wasted, pretend they're. We can move the budget over. So.
That's what I got.
This is what, does he have the advertised? Did you adopt the advertised?
How much is it?
Seven hundred and sixty seven thousand, seven ninety four. That's why I thought that. That's her, that's your. Director that needs to. Bring some things over on the gateway, so.
Yeah, it was seven hundred and some thousand dollars.
Yeah, do we approve it?
Senator, why she does. Satisfied.
We were asked for a fix, is that, no?
I've been asked for. But I don't want to click any buttons and gateway for her. Just. But it does show only eighty five thousand is adopted, so I don't know what you can do to build.
Yeah, add all the names and the text, right, if it was at all, right, all of that.
So if you adopt it, then if. Once we get. Adopt it, then it just won't get to stop him, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Or it, because it has to be uploaded to gateway.
Okay. And you don't know what the rate should be. I mean, compared to.
What hours, I thought.
Adopted tax rate.
I thought it was point four.
It was a point four.
That's.
Well, reassessment. But that's sort of right, usually go. Uh, number and manage. Boss, any other questions here? If not, all entertain a motion to approve of. The budgets. And the tax rates.
We need to wait for a second to take it back on the.
Oh, well, it's what?
That's separate?
Yeah, that's separate, we do miss separate, that's not.
Okay.
That's correct. It's separate.
So you make motion?
No, I'm entertaining the motion.
I like that motion.
Kenny makes a motion to approve the budget.
I'll say.
Thirty seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey. That's original. Okay, can we go back to solid waste once Ken hears that? Good. Let me see if I can find you. It's underneath that. Here it is. Okay, Dana? Right to you.
Okay. Um, I just, I know this was previously discussed in the last meeting, means that it was not voted on individually. So I did leave it in favor for you, just to kind of go over some statistics regarding the clerk's stipend. You know, the middle of the assembly, they decided they felt it necessary to vote in approval for that, because the clerk election stipend. Because they do know exactly how much we additionally do in a year where we have the election. Going on, and I did also provide you attached there a statement from Ricky Hopper from the state board of accounts. Stating that this would not affect any salary study or compensation. And then the state board of accounts has approved this. Um, just to give you a little statistic, we have seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ninety five registered veterans of the county that I oversee. Um, we have twelve twenty precincts, eleven boat centers. Seventy-ish coworkers, eight-ish absentee workers, we have travel board, election board. Plus running the clerk's office. Despite the election, since I, just since I've taken office in twenty three. We have completed three hundred and thirty four in-state marriages, twelve out of state marriage licenses. And we've took out support marriages as well, which we have done over two hundred ceremonies in our office. In several are coming to other counties and saying do not try that service. Um, I've also got all of our deputies. Um, I've also got all of our deputies sign up in past the exam to become notaries. And we have notarized over a hundred and fifty documents just since we've started becoming notaries. So that's for county employees and public. We completed over two hundred passport applications. And just since I've taken office. We take payments, we've taken over three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars just in payments for traffic from Bill and Civil. Over three hundred and fifty thousand in child support payments, and we filed over thirty-five hundred cases. And taking into consideration all the phone calls, walk-ins, questions and emails that come in during an election year. I just want you to consider reconsider the stipends, um, for the clerk. And that on manually for this year, it was only each year that generally have a general.
Have you ever done this in the past, this clerk got more money in election years?
This, uh, just became effective July first of this year by the general.
Question is, have you ever done that? Me, me, if you take the office clerk, that you know we have election. That's. You know that going in, I don't know why they want to pay more now.
Well, we have election pay already, right? We use election.
Yeah, like.
It's fourteen hundred dollars for the board of voter registration. And there's two other boards that we're on as well. But this is just an additional that the, the legislature just felt that we deserve, because they do know how much extra we are doing. Each year becomes more and more. More rules, laws, more groups overseas. And if you have the money and the budget, it would come out of just the overtime.
There's those stuff, or talk, so. For the additionals, do you add stuff this year? Stuff that you did.
Yes. Yes, we started performing marriages. Um, we took over the jury, so currently, actually, we are, I have some deputies in jury right now. And also we offer absentee, so I cover the launches for absentee as well, so we have that going on right now as well.
Who did you start to emerge?
Uh, we started when I took over office in twenty-three. And then we also became, I just got everybody, we have passed the amount to become notaries, and we are notarizing a lot. And we did not do that before either.
This stipend is just for.
Correct. Yep, it is the one-time stipend on the year that there is a general election.
You get extra pay for election, didn't you? Correct.
Fourteen hundred for voter registration.
How much?
Fourteen.
I thought I seen it, there was a little bit.
Uh, yeah, there is pay for the boards that were on, I'm on the election board and the county board. So that's a good show.
I thought there was additional, like thirty-eight.
If you chug with the boards that were on, then yes, but just for voter registration, that's worth.
Any other discussion? I thought we voted on both of them. That was my opinion. Yeah.
Well, can he add to twenty-five hundred, so you can do two thousand dollars? Does have to be twenty-five.
Well, I don't think it's fair to give it to you, not yet to you. That's my opinion. I wonder how anybody else feels about it.
Yeah, you know this when you sign up for clerk, that this is part of your duties.
And I know the General Assembly.
Hey.
Do what?
Well, that doesn't make a question on me, huh? Yeah. I mean, I, I will say there were past auditors that received a secretary, commissioner's secretary stipends. I was in the budget for many years. Um, Janet came and took that out, which she. Auditor, going back, I've been done, you asked that question about, that's been done in the past. Um, auditors. Two, I know at least the two auditor through fourteen.
Got anything, Mel?
Nope. Nothing.
I know the jury thing was. Definitely that's sad. It got passed back and forth, and it came back to clerk's office.
Correct, we offered to take it back because they were really gonna lose their, their employee.
I think we got some extra part-time help out, haven't we, Danny?
Yes, but we are having trouble keeping part-time. So the clerk's office.
Stipend is for elections.
Right, which is going on, we're doing all of that during the elections.
I guess, I really don't want to probably give it off election future. There is a tremendous amount of work goes into an election.
I think it negates our, our payroll study that we base it on their responsibilities and there is election. There is election on top of it. So now we're putting up stuff on top of the election plan, on top of the payment.
So the study was, there was an election that years, we've all talked about.
They sat down and talked about what.
But the study was done before, before that was proved, and it started out before that was proved.
I think this is beneficial for counties who haven't taken, to do those things, and who are still paying all of the offices the same. Because then they're paying, I mean, we're already paying the offices. We're working towards it if we're not.
I agree, I know, I. I think we voted on it last week. That's my opinion. Well, say anything else? We'll move on. Judge Dick.
Dan, was my transfer question, it goes on already? Okay, I, I will have one thing, and, you know. Uh, so when we had our budget meeting. A month ago, I told you that, uh, the monitor of our juvenile probation officer had applied for a grant. Got the grant, and I just wanted to. Okay, I'm gonna let him do that.
Morning. So, I've been employed by court services for a little over a year now. Um, when I started working here, kind of part of my task was to identify different gaps and needs in the juvenile justice system. And then just the community as a whole. Well, the first thing that we did in January of this year, we hired someone to come teach some programs to juveniles. Those programs weren't just for probation, but also for anyone in the community that had needs. Um, since January, those programs have served and provided services for over forty juveniles and their families. Those services addressed substance abuse, school performance, runways, important abilities, um, and just plenty of boredom. Um, also in the last year, we've been exploring different funding options to continue. Um, the idea is, you know, how do we grow and put. Not as much responsibility on the county department, but what can we fund on our own? So we started looking into grants. Um, I applied for a juvenile criminal justice. Juvenile virgin grant through the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. We were awarded that grant in the amount of seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. That grant will, uh, be for two years, so twenty-five to twenty-seven. I do believe that that, that grant is renewable too. Um, it's something that's been around a little bit, and I think it's something that will continue. So if that's the case, we would continue to apply, I think, as for funding. With that grant, what we would like to do is take that program person and increase their hours, um, to twenty-one hours a week. Um, with that, and with the grant, grant would fund her salary, it would fund her, uh, budget through that. Um, the grant would also fund any supplies that we need, and would fund any programs that we need. So essentially, in that case, we wouldn't ask for any additional money. With that program, um, she would be, uh, reaching out to all the schools in the county. She would be working with police, with DCS. The idea proposition would be more of a, a prevention kind of program. So in our role in our office, I would do probation, so after arrested, her role would be more of interaction with the police, how do we keep them out of the system? With. What she'll be doing, um, we have a couple of programs in mind, but I think her role would be more of. Working with the schools, working with those families, working with the police in a situation where the police are at houses. And there isn't a crime committed, but the situation where this family needs help, she could identify those services, she could create those services and put those in play. So I think we're here just kind of notifying you of what our plan is, asking for your blessing, and then, uh, just let you know the good things that are happening in front of our office.
When you get this lady on board, uh, she's been doing my programming for us, she's given us money for that. All that. Gave us money to hire a second juvenile probation officer, to get that, to get applicants originally. So converted that money to programming, I mean, we've got money to do this through the end of the year, already getting the budget. Then this grant to pick up from there, but this is kind of put the door, uh, this person's on the fence, whether she wants to. Also, this is another opportunity for her to kind of deal it out, see if she does this full time, and if she does, uh. We'll do that money, take that higher. So it's just a, I think the vote on today is to let you know where we're headed.
Yeah, I got a question. Do you, do you work with Centerstone at all?
I do, and, uh.
I mean, it's, I'm, I've been trying to bring up Ken Warren, but I mean, where.
Well, I, and when I, when I came to the Kent County, you know, I had heard some grumbleings, um, about things. So Centerstone was one of the first people that I reached out to and let them know, you know, how I would like things to go in the juvenile system. Um, and for us, it's been fantastic, and we created and built a relationship. Um, they're juvenile supervisor, I mean, we, we communicate via cellphone. Um, any services that I need, she gets done right away. Um, we've kind of restarted some substance abuse programs. Um, so really for them, it's, I'll provide you the referrals, but I need you to follow through, and they. On the juvenile side, since they're also for us.
Okay, I just wondered, I just, we've. Not getting enough information out of.
Well, and we have, there's a class, a drug education program, so we, we started using it in the schools. You get caught with a THC at school, in lieu of expulsion, you have to do this program. Um, and we kind of all partnered together. Centerstone got a, I don't know, a grant or some money that they can pay for those programs if the family can. So it's a seventy-five dollar cost, if the family can pay, great, if not, then Centerstone has so many that they will provide for you. So I just think it's that partnership.
This is kind of thing that I'll kind of jump on.
Yeah.
We don't get, we don't get this kind of information. And just stick your hand out to us, want to buy new, we don't hear from them at all. You know, things like programs like that, you know, they come in, all the things like that they were doing, and. Shows us how much money is being spent. You know, I didn't know a problem with them, but they just come in, give us money, and out the door. That, that's how I feel about it, all, all rest of the feeling, no. I don't have much of a filter, I mean, you know, this is. This kind of stuff we need to hear, and we don't. That makes sense?
Yep, well, and that's what, you know, I don't work primarily with adults, so we really just been focusing on juveniles, and we try to share that. You know, how to be, but I think the worlds are so different between the juveniles and adults, and supervisors are different, so. The woman that I work with is great, but I don't know how much she has to do with it.
Yeah.
Certainly, that's all we have. Centerstone.
Yeah, they, they have the only certified substance abuse program in the county.
And then, and they are in the county schools, I got a sense for that. They have people at all schools, I want to give credit. I've checked on the Greensburg. I didn't know they've got a couple of offices in schools. But, you know, the administrative side, they need to come in and tell us this kind of bitch. Yeah, we've asked. Well, I wish you'd have been last week.
Yeah, you know. And that's with our programming, with what we're trying to do, you know, we're trying to look at if, if Centerstone, for example, couldn't provide. And what can we do to provide, you know, we don't want to have any barriers, or we don't have a place. We're trying to create.
I don't feel like adult probation is really on the table, except I don't think they provide. Like they do for the school, that's for you. I don't, I think, what do you, do you agree?
Right, yeah.
If they are our total mental health provider, I think they should be taken care of. Hey, thanks for info, though. Did this get covered, Judge? Just end the transcript.
Well, I was, I've been pretty deep, always I have a big old ridge. Help the children's health, of course, the two ladies that retired didn't take it all. So that allowed me to update this. I have to do. Um, I haven't been updated since two thousand nine. They told me we only make parts for these, this, but any more, so that'll be announced in the news without asking. That was the second part of it, people. Thank you.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
Maybe I just got the text back, stay on me there. Hold the number that you got. Seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. If everybody get that on solid waste. Seven hundred and sixty-seven, we can approve it, and we'll have to come back later and sign, or you want to sign this?
Go side down, because that's the one. Always at all, okay.
Okay.
Well, we.
We can approve this and sign this, and then just put. You want to talk now?
You can mark it out, mark it out.
Over. Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve solid waste. Yeah, I'm ex motion.
I'll second.
No seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Got everything, but additional. If I have a copy of those? First one I have here is for, from ARPA. For new directions. Hundred thousand to be used for a capital building project. For the, for the build, Danny?
Well, they're looking at, uh, trying to relocate, they're in the hundred buildings. For here, yeah. It's truly not set up for what they need, so we're trying to find some place that they can either renovate, fit, or. Actually, possibly renovate this, and make it work. Wait, there's no walk space in here as far as them being separated out. Although, they may have to buy a piece of property or something. That's what that's for.
My heavy questions or anything? My heavy questions or anything? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
That's so bad.
Bill makes motion to approve. In seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, ARPA funds for Parks Department ball diamonds, one hundred and fifty thousand. Parks Department would use their ball diamonds. Use their ball diamonds. Do I have any questions on that?
That's why they're going to use the, the
Yeah, part of it, yeah. Any questions for her? Get Brian to rob both of them. Didn't even skip you. I couldn't see you.
I'll make motion to approve, bud.
Any next motion to approve?
I'll say.
Thirty seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, here's one from the, well, it's to match the Riverboat Funds, sixty thousand, three hundred dollars. So everybody that came in on the office a hundred percent of what they asked for this year.
Explain to all of them that this is this year.
One year. I think we discussed that in our budget hearing. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Yeah, I make the motion to approve. Bill seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? AMA tornado warning sirens, eighty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six. Where we, where they being replaced at?
Well, we had appropriate funding to PMA originally, and they hadn't spent this money. And when we asked Brad, he said he didn't need it. We took it out and put it back into all the money, and then he called and said, no, I need that finished by sirens.
So the description was written as code red, which was the new system that was put in. But that also was supposed to include the sirens. So when he was asked, are you done with money for code red? He said, yes. And so it got rolled back. Yes, so that was just pulling it back.
They sirens too, yeah.
Westport, uh, Letch, Bernie, St. Paul, Clarksville. I think that's it. The one in St. Paul. Shelby County put one in at Myers Meat Locker. And if we get St. Paul to agree, they will move that one to Newport because there ain't any. Bill Howland puts it in. I think that's all of them. We got memorandums of understanding for and Lake Santee, Lake Santee, Clarksville. Letch is already assigned there. I think that's all off the top of my head.
So what would that want to do for you or not?
Right now, no.
I wonder if Greg will tell me that. My cousin Greg here has had one there next to my house.
Yeah, I think.
Well, the, the understanding was when he came to the ARPA for that he was going to use that to finish out the county. So there will be one where it needed base. So assuming that's what we're doing, putting what it needs to be.
Yeah, that's my understanding also. I don't, I could have, I knew I was going to talk to him. Could have brought the map to show you. But I want to, St. Paul, St. Paul don't want to give up to one that's coming from the county, but yet they got one just like right there at Myers Meat Locker, which is in St. Paul. So they're still discussing that.
That's what, that might have to get real quick in there.
How many is this purchase?
I, I don't know.
Because I think they were like ten, eleven thousand a piece.
Like a couple of grand in the sirens, all the leftover, we took it out.
Can we get an update on this for this?
Bring map back, listen to where they're at.
I entertain a motion to approve. Don't worry. Any made motion? Thirty seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Got one from Best Friends. Personal Services, four thousand dollars, Professionals. Thirty-three thousand, five hundred for a male, thirty-seven, five hundred. Going toward personal and professional services. Been the Best Friends grant for animal shelter. Is that for your veterinarian or?
Um, that was for the volunteer coordinator, volunteer coordinator, the adoption coordinator and grant.
How's that work again then?
Yeah, it's for the, who's it, explain it a little bit better.
So we've received a grant from Best Friends. And they gave us money to hire in a part-time adoption coordinator, volunteer coordinator, and uh, paid for a grant writer.
Just so you can spend the grant money.
Yeah.
Can I get that? Thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, entertain a motion to approve. I make the motion, Bill seconds. Any other question? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Rachel Ray, Save Them All. Professional Services, twenty-seven thousand, go toward professional service, shelter, and shelter animals, um, and Save Them All.
And that is for the TNR program, trap needed return. Feral or just community cats, get them fixed. So then we're going to see less and hopefully see less and less reproducing of cats. And we just sent our first batch over there. We had twenty.
Trap needed release?
Or returned back to their area to their colony.
Can I get that?
Yeah, and it also prevents the intakes. So.
Yeah, it's Rachel Ray grandmother. Any next motion to approve?
Second.
Bill seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I got something. What everybody looked at. We'll have them out. Bernie worked on this. That's one there, three phones. They want to get home, take a look. See what they think. Yeah, take one back here. If you would. Danny, the Bernie said to get the other off school. Bernie, you want to explain it?
Yeah. I've been convinced all along that sixty-five million dollars wasted by that pool. So I went out alone. Got forty years' experience in the excavated concrete business. So I called on some contacts I had, got some numbers put together. I'll just go over here. I got in here, demolition of the old pool. I put down eighty thousand dollars, but talking with the commissioners, uh, one commissioner anyway. I think this is something the county itself can do. We've got vacos, we got trucks. And you probably don't believe, build rooms, build bricks, I think. Demolition will clear Steve. Well within the means of we could do countywide. Uh, which once you take out the old pool, you're going to have to put in, uh, bill and excavation, it's going to have to be perfected so that the new pool can be constructed. So I got a, it's made on that, that forty thousand dollars. And then I reached out to a contractor from Indianapolis who has, does part of buildings and has pools put in all the time. And kind of just drew up a dimension of pool. What we want, I have a square footage on it here, but it's pretty close to what the pool is now. It would include a, and you can change it. It includes a walk-in zero to depth. Your wind lanes could be four feet or maybe six feet. That really won't make a whole lot of difference. It also included like a thirty by thirty area for a slide or polyvalley or something like that. And then specs that you'd have to put together and get, you know, anyway. A general pool of that size, with what I mentioned, the design and build. This company felt like two and a half million dollars would cover that. That would be the, the pool itself, all the concrete, all the, well, I got this here. Pool will be constructed, concrete floors with stainless steel sidewalks, PVC, membrane finished. The perimeter would be a stainless steel guitar gutter system. Full structure, refastriation and filtration, two point five million. It also says a slide budget of three hundred thousand, which is not included with what I feared. So that would be something you could add later or not add at all, or whatever you want to do, or unless you're priceable. Mechanical, exco, and plumbing islands, decking, fencing, and filtration building, restrooms would be by others. So we already had restrooms out there. So whatever you spend a great amount, you'd have to include in the cost. But anyway, that's two point five million. And the back fill is the probably sand and compacted and concrete deck. I mentioned the deck that's out there now. Uh, let's see, we got fourteen thousand, four hundred square feet of concrete apron around the pool. The fill stone and placement, and then a twelve by twelve filter house, which you need a bill, you put filtration system in and pumps in. I got a bid of two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for that. The fill stone around the pool and underneath deck, these are all proposals. Now, these could change when you get a bid. Seventy-eight thousand dollars. And then a, I just, a filter house, just through more buildings, totally insulated with one door, fifty thousand dollars. So that total comes to three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And then I put in local electric plumbing, because you got to bring, probably bring some new electric in, new plumbing in. There'll be some costs that we don't see upfront, but this could probably be done by local contractors. So I allowed two hundred thousand dollars for that. And the, the building's in there, filtration building. And then I just called Indiana Wire, fencing, thirty dollars per foot for the fencing construction. Of course, to do all this, the commissioners would have to become the, the general contractor on it, which is a pretty easy thing to do, I think. And I put in here, they wanted to hire a project manager, salt to work with them, make sure everything was up. Bid another hundred thousand dollars. So with all that I put together for under three point five million dollars, I think we could construct a pool. That'd be a nice pool. So where you go from there, to the council commissioners, I just want to put it together because I thought a lot of money in was necessary. And I've got proposals from, uh, contractors that come up with these numbers. So I don't think they didn't be too far off. Now, of course, longer your wait, things are going to go well, but very, so if there's something to do somewhere, council wants to do something with it, that's fine.
Really, let's go.
Call the way. Big commissioners call. So I think there's some grant money. Is there, what kind of money you got? Or gets that back. When it broke floods, what everybody said.
Not everybody. You should have asked people that knew.
Oh, I think it was said in the meeting. And it was like the Rush County, and then we were
No. It was a fun time deal.
Yeah, this is for everybody's information.
Part four, be able to check that out. That'd be something, can, can we just have your feedback on that program? Or something to do with what you want. Yeah, is there a design or anything, what it looked like, or? Yeah, I just put forward or whatever. Got to see what that design looks like compared to what we're
So this basically just shows, I mean, it's just a, it doesn't have like a play area or anything. You didn't incorporate any of the features that we had. That would be some of the difference in the cost that we looked at. I mean, we had included, like we just
We would now be spending three point three million of our county money on a half-cooled, or the exact same thing we would have been able to spend.
Should we, it's still the commissioners. Let them decide what they want to do. Or can you go, you got a meeting coming up? Or I'll come to show everybody this. Amendments can be added to.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's This shows, uh, let's see, thirty by thirty. Eighteen hundred square feet plus sixty by sixty, thirty-six hundred. So you're like about five thousand square feet. So we include zero entrance, ADA left chairs, platters. All the, all the possible filtration.
Concerns? And I'll tell you, concerns? Thank you, Ernie. Appreciate it. Okay. Ron, you got any thoughts?
Uh, I'm ready two point O, we did it to five percent. Last couple of times, we actually did. Um, so I know the big project with counties, fairgrounds, so is that progresses, so I might be asking for more information on that, so we can get the scores. We actually kind of outpaced the state, they don't have the backend infrastructure to actually distribute the funds yet, because it's a little faster, but actually we're the first in the state, so all the projects are really well, but I will be asking for more information on the fairgrounds projects, so we can make sure that it's in place and all the matches in place, back for hopefully, and then next public council meetings, I'll probably come view with another economic development, we're going to have a settlement for other projects, so the rest is, uh, in the future. I bet square ups, they came and one, uh, so that hopefully we'll in the fact that they need to kind of bring that board guy for approval. Um, and I did want to say, uh, I want to thank public, that's a, Ryan, Associate Emma in the office is kind of finishing up our, what we call the opportunity yearbook, but this is, is a large book essentially that showcases various businesses, business sectors in Decatur County. Uh, as you guys are aware, in the schools and the career pathways and such, and kids are, are, you know, kind of guided to uh, you know, towards a career around eighth grade, ninth grade. Um, and this yearbook would help them kind of be informed as to what opportunities are here in Decatur County. They could talk to, uh, and, and really kind of showcase how many different career paths there are in certain, with certain sectors, like the hospitals, not just nurses and doctors. IT, it's county coatings, all that, uh, equally would be the county. Uh, and it's free, we just ask that you kind of do a write-up of, of your business, what sort of professions are within that business. Uh, she's, she's contacted a lot of businesses here, uh, and really wanted to stress that we're going to have to respond and get back to them, we have about fifty and fifty, fifty-five signed up, as well, as many as possible, again, that's just to kind of showcase, uh, to students here and, uh, graduating and those prior, showcase what, uh, which job opportunities there are in the Decatur County. And you just get a call that the office, two 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 five two zero, uh, can ask for a mention here.
Thank you. Don, you got anything?
Uh, we do have leaders of motors tonight with a meet and greet, uh, some of our newest chamber members will be on hand at the tap to introduce themselves and for you to meet them, that is from Board of CFPM, uh, again, at the top here on the North Side Square this afternoon. Um, business continues as normal, very strong, a lot of new members coming on board, uh, which is super um, exciting, I think, for Decatur County, I think it shifts a lot of hope, a lot of promise. Um, I will come back at the beginning in November and do an update for you. Um, and then in the meantime, we've got our annual dinner coming up, tickets are on sale online on our website. And we will be awarding some of the county's most notable awards at that time, so if you can join us, we'd love to have you.
Glenn?
I just wanted to report to you, starting up the entry level drive training program. I had four guys into that and three of the four have been through the process and got their CDL. And like I said, no cost to them. The county, they had paid for the permit, they had paid for the testing, but three of the four are completed, so they are CDLs.
Well, you do, you take that out of pay or how they pay that.
They had to pay that for, like I said, I hired you at nineteen fifty. But the understanding that once they got their CDL, that would move them to the lower, the lowest truck driver bet. So the first one I hired, I didn't do that, but after, he was my test buddy. But the other three, I hired him at eighteen fifty. So in that, two of those one of them basically didn't get an increase because he was a test buddy. And I hired you at the beginning. Uh, anything that I hired below that, as far as that pay. I increased them to more truck rent, to twenty dollars, fourteen cents. But the program best work. I started that at, for that to go, that's a way to possibly improve opportunities for whoever. But I also have been pretty selective on who I hired on that program. But I'm like, I wanted to do like Boone County, they came in, go do the program, and work for a year, and then man was off making twenty-seven, twenty-eight bucks now. So I think the guys that I've hired, uh, I think are are going to be there for a while, I think they like it.
You're not putting any limit on, you have to stay three years, you have to pro rate.
No, I think we can, that's why.
You can?
And I don't think you can, I mean, that's valid.
I thought, I thought you could.
No, I, I talked to Boone.
You can't even, even, not even visit, do this, put on there. Wait, a spark here, you got a rare person.
Yeah. That's a chance you take.
This year, just putting it out there, maybe.
Well, I know, I know, because if you go get them separately, it costs you money, if you see that.
Well, I mean, for them, instead of them going paying
Yeah.
up two seventy, two hundred bucks.
Right.
You know, we're actually getting a job, career, insurance, you know, everything. Like I said, I've been kind of selective on who I hired. It's kind of opened up the pool for your selection, you might say. Uh, because a lot of these CDL drivers that come and apply, they won't be just a trucker. They don't want to do any visible work, and that's not what I'm looking for. So.
I'm glad it's working.
Yeah.
Is there any questions for? Sheriff, you got any thoughts?
Morning, thank you. Pardon? Morning.
Okay. Good, anybody else? Entertained motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any made that motion, any suggestions?